It's a meeting here.
Yeah.
Right, so we don't ever, that's what we formally get, we don't ever get.
Nine o'clock formal letter.
But we probably should.
Yeah, that would help me a bunch, because I just, I don't know where I'm.
Yep, I understand.
I can't do, I keep my hands tied until it's July, so.
Okay, I got it in.
Okay, I'll put it in my phone now.
Recommendation and resolution.
Yeah, it is nine AM. I will call the meeting of Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. We will be abiding by the Open Meeting Act as amended, copy of which is at the entrance to this room. At nine fifteen, we will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and meet as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, also abiding by the Open Meeting Act as amended. First order of business is prayer. And Commissioner Wiems, would you do us the honors, please?
Just thank you, Chairman. Please join me. Heavenly Father, as we come together today to do the public interest, serve the public interest, we ask for your guidance and temperance. We would also ask for your protective hand over our fire and rescue people here, our military and police, both homeland and abroad, that serve our interests and protect our safety. Be with all these people and also with us again, Lord, to give us some of your wisdom as we deliberate and do the best we can for our constituents. Thus, we all ask in your name, amen.
Next item, approve the minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting held on March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting that was held March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Brens.
Aye.
Lular.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye. Next item is to consider the following, first, claims and treasurers receipts.
Chairman, I'd make a motion, we approve the claims and treasurer receipts as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hubley.
Aye.
Wiems.
Aye.
Lular.
Aye.
Brens.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye. Okay, next item is to authorize the chairman to sign the right-of-way permit submitted by McFeeder's Limited Partnership. And this is for electrical service line. You ready with this, Jason? Looks like they're just going under our road.
Yeah, they're just doing a board, there's no objection from road.
And what road is that? That isn't State Farm, is it?
You would have to ask me that. There's a couple of them that were recently, I can't recall the location of that one.
Yeah, I don't think that's.
Yeah, their map doesn't articulate it.
Doesn't say very well, but you've seen, you've approved that, okay?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion authorizing you to sign the right-of-way permit submitted by McFeeder's Limited Partnership.
And I do have a check from McFeeder's for the right-of-way permit. Do we have a motion?
I'll second it, but I have a question, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Are there two crossings, Jason?
Uh, no, there should be just one.
Well, they're describing the legal as eight slash seventeen section, and then the twelve townships is twenty-seventh range. Would, that would imply there's two different crossings. There's two different sections in there.
Is it because it's going from one side to the other?
It could be.
Looks like that road is separation.
That could be it, that's probably it. So section eight, section seventeen are impacted?
Yes.
You got it?
Seventeen's on the south side, it's on the north.
Okay. I'm gonna see if I can enumerate it that way.
Yeah, it's kind of.
But that's complete, that is complete.
We do have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Lular.
Aye.
Wiems.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye.
Brens.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
This is a fancy map, though.
Okay, would you send that back to them?
Looks like this is out in your district, right?
Okay. Next item is authorizing the chairman to sign the right-of-way permit submitted by Consolidated Companies, Inc. This looks to be a fiber cable. You know where that's, that's up north on Maxwell, isn't it?
It's quite an extensive project.
Yeah, it's an extensive, it's around Maxwell.
Jason, would you come up, please?
Jason Schultz, Lincoln County Highway Superintendent.
Okay, thank you.
Didn't meet in time, did we, Chris?
No, we didn't. Should probably put something on the calendar this week.
You've looked at this as well, I see.
Yeah.
What can you tell us about this particular project?
Um, so it's fiber installation, but it's quite a few different locations in and around Maxwell. And we'll do our standard pre-construction meeting with them, since there is multiple locations, just to make sure that they're installing that either in the ditch or in the roadway, depending on where we have projects coming up and make sure they don't get it in a spot that we're. Applications, just to go do an onsite meet with them and walk through the locations, so.
Jason, we've talked about this before, but today's technology, do they, do they have a GPS on all these that they keep on file so they know exactly where that fiber is?
Um.
That they would share with you?
I don't know if they have that, they are supposed to furnish us as-built drawings, but as far as the GPS, I think that might be something we need to consider talking about if we revamp our permit application.
I would, this time I would just politely ask them if they can, and we can get it in our permitting.
Planning forward, as we do these, and these are still high-dollar repairs.
Yeah.
It makes sense to me to start logging.
Yep.
Maybe a requirement that says, look, you know, obviously you have the technology to put it in, you have the technology to know where it's at exactly, with GPS and triangulation, so we like, we'd like to request a copy. So that we know exactly where that's at if we go out to put a caller in, right?
Yep.
I mean, it makes sense to me that let's get better at that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Ideally, I'd like to see all of that information get compiled into our GIS.
That's where I'm going.
Exactly, which I know we've talked about in the past, so.
Okay, colleagues, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we authorize you to sign the right-of-way permit submitted by Consolidated Companies Incorporated for fiber optic cable.
Second, motion and a second, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Brens.
Aye.
Wiems.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye.
Lular.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Thank you, Jason.
Yep.
Okay, next item is to authorize the chairman to sign the SLFRF award agreement with Hope's Covered Food Pantry.
Becky.
This is the last agreement we need to sign from the ones that was central, the grants that she withdrew course in, that you guys approved. So this is the last agreement we have on those. Also in today's claim was the last payment, we finally got the last SAM number, UEI number, so that is the last payment for all those grants.
So that brings that all up to stuff and it's completely.
Yes, because we had the one place that withdrew their application, so this will be it.
Okay, sounds great.
Can I ask how much this is for?
I do not, Hope's Covered was for that, the one today was fifty-five hundred dollars, it must have been a rescue center, that wasn't a claim. Hope's Covered's been paid, it's just, this was their reporting contract.
Thank you.
It was something less than twelve thousand, I think. It wasn't a.
I don't remember Hope's Covered.
Eighty-five hundred?
It was, it was a fairly small amount.
It was smaller, yes, but I don't remember the exact number. It's been paid for a while.
Colleagues?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion, we authorize the chairman to sign the SLFRF award agreement with Hope's Covered Food Pantry.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hubley.
Aye.
Lular.
Aye.
Wiems.
Aye.
Brens.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Uh, here we go, here's the original.
Yeah.
Three twenty.
Morning, Jason.
My little sister's birthday today.
It's Ashley's birthday today.
Huh?
It's Ashley's birthday today. It's a good day for women are alive, so.
In the medical field, yeah. Super. Tell Ashley happy birthday.
Okay, next item is authorize the chairman to sign the lottery operator slash owner slash officer renewal application. Let me tell me what this involves.
Marie Parker from Cody Keen brought that in, it's kind of a two-you thing. Every other year, the owner-operators have to apply and get their permitting, and the next year, all the outlets have to apply and get their permitting. So this year is the one for the owners-operators, and they're all renewing.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that you sign the lottery operator-owner-officer renewal application.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
No questions, just curious. Becky, do you know who, he's out of town, or which venue they own?
They're all part of Cody Keen.
I think they're all part of Cody Keen, yeah.
Okay, so that's just the aggregate ownership.
Yep.
Right.
Got it.
Yeah, because they're the owner, the other one would be outlets.
They're the only one authorized Cody Keen in our.
I believe they've all three been the same owner since the beginning.
Yep.
Okay.
It's gotta be the pharmacist bill, it's not that.
Yeah.
And if you go down the line, it's his partner.
Yeah. We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Lular.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye.
Wiems.
Aye.
Brens.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Morning, Judy.
How's it going?
Morning, good. They wrote that.
Um.
Joe wanted everybody to look at it, the report we signed.
Make sure that that's all of these ones are beautiful.
Is she salaried? They're not, definitely not. No, but I think, well, that's odd, because if they pegged it as percentage. I don't know if this particular individual is salaried, if I'm not mistaken. The notation is on this, this particular one, I thought that was salaried.
There's the percentage.
There she is, isn't she salaried?
No.
Oh, I'm mistaken. You're it, huh?
I'm it.
Okay, you're it.
Okay, it is nine fifteen. We will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization. First item is approve minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held on March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Chair, I would move to approve the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wiems.
Aye.
Brens.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye.
Lular.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye. Certificates of correction and refund as submitted by the county assessor. County assessor indicates none, thank you. Take care of that easy enough. Uh, next item, motor vehicle tax exemption applications as submitted by the county treasurer. Would you please join us, please? Tell us who you are, if you would, please.
Alex Gertu, Lincoln County Treasurer.
Good morning.
You stockpiled them for us, huh?
Yes.
Looks like we do have a few.
Sure do.
You have someone I could pass on to my.
I've got three, I'm gonna let somebody else work some.
Why don't just keep passing?
They've been sitting. Joey, you get to begin, please.
All right.
Give you two of them? Really, you want two of them?
That's what happens at the end of the line, man.
You asked.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the application for exemption for the American National Red Cross for a number of vehicles, they are used all for charitable purposes. They are a Ford Transit, a Dodge Grand Caravan, a Ford E four fifty ambulance, a Ford, another Ford Transit, two more Ford Transits, all used for charitable purposes and recommended for approval by our Lincoln County Treasurer.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hubley.
Aye.
Lular.
Aye.
Wiems.
Aye.
Brens.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the application for exemption from Community Action Partnership of Mid Nebraska. It is for a two thousand and seven Town and Country Chrysler, used for charitable purposes solely for the transportation of clients and staff. It has been approved by our county treasurer, Alex Gertu.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Lular.
Aye.
Wiems.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye.
Brens.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Chairman, I would move to approve the application for exemption from the North Platte in the Fourth Square Gospel Church, two thousand and one West A here in North Platte, for one two thousand and twenty-two Sawyer Model BP trailer. Reason being that this trailer is used to transport electronics and equipment when having services off-site at another facility, also to haul tables and chairs for the same purpose. It has been approved by our county treasurer, Alex Gertu.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wiems.
Aye.
Lular.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye.
Brens.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I have an application for exemption from West Central District Health Department for a two thousand and eight H and H cargo trailer. Uh, the trailer is to be used to haul emergency supplies as needed in the event of an emergency or disaster. Uh, it has been recommended for approval by the Lincoln County Treasurer, it would be my motion that we approve this.
Second, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Brens.
Aye.
Wiems.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye.
Lular.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
And Mr. Chairman, I have an application for exemption that everybody passed on, but I'll jump on this grenade, I suppose, from Great Plains Health for a two thousand and twelve Dodge van, a two thousand and sixteen Ford Escape, and a two thousand and twenty-three PJ Trailers Dump Trailer uh, to be used for charitable purposes in general hospital use. It has been recommended for approval by the Lincoln County Treasurer, and I suppose that it would be my motion that we approve it as well.
I did make a note on here that, I forgot, sorry, I forgot to make a note that it may not be for charitable purposes as they claimed in the boxes, but no other item fit, so for general hospital use, that's why I approved it.
Yeah, it's one of that black hole where the hospital is just a charitable organization.
Right.
So they marked charitable, right?
Right, because it doesn't fit in any other category, but then on the notes where it says general hospital use, that's why I approved it.
Falls into that state statute thing.
Right.
So.
So we have a motion.
I'll second it for discussion, further discussion. So, have you, this is one of those things, Tyler, we're kind of stuck with, right?
Well, I'm not going to claim that the property tax and the motor vehicle ones are quite as, I don't think the statute's written the same.
Okay.
That way. I would start to be a little concerned if their exemption doesn't fit into any one of the pre-printed categories, but I want some time to look into that.
Okay. Well, can we table it, allow our deputy county attorney to look into it a little bit more?
I would vote in favor of that.
I would too.
So I withdraw my motion and ask that we table it.
We wish, we shall table it, I'm in agreement. You'll check into that first, then?
I don't recall anybody.
Wiems.
We withdrew a second, too.
Yeah. I don't recall anybody seconding me doing more work. Yeah, I will check into that and have an answer for next week.
Okay.
Would you like this, the original?
Well, I want a copy of it, yes.
Can you let me know in the meantime what you figure out before meeting?
Sure.
Your honor, withdraw your second.
Yes, I do, thank you. Officially withdraw my second, thank you.
Okay, are there any others? Are we finished with those?
There should be one more.
I think it's next week.
I don't have it.
I just turned in that one. Because I was saying.
Check shows pile.
Oh, I was like, I think I want for next week.
Okay, we're okay then, Becky? You got it?
Yeah.
Good, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Alex.
Thanks, Alex. Is there anything else to come before the Lincoln County Board of Equalization? Thank you. Hearing none, we shall adjourn at nine twenty-four as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization and reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners.
It's interesting, we've had, uh, over the years, a number of discussions about those forms and what they mean. And unfortunately, in the past, we've found, uh, it doesn't really matter what they say on them because it's very specific what it says on the form. But when it's interpreted, it means it's something totally different. So that's, that's been quite interesting over the years.
I think we have to go with the most simplest operational definition that's used on the form.
Chairman.
Could be my thoughts.
Could we officially recognize our guest, our fellow commissioner from Keith County?
Yes, uh, pardon, pardon me, but we have a commissioner from a neighboring county to the west that we would like to recognize as being in our midst this morning, so, um, Kim, would you like to introduce him?
Commissioner Lane Anderson. Greetings, Commissioner.
Well, thank you.
You're, you're here to take notes and tell us what we're doing wrong, I hope?
I am, yes.
Keep tabs on Commissioner Hugley for us?
I'm learning a lot. I'm gonna take it back over to Lala.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you. Thank you for joining us.
Well, thanks for having me.
Just stay away from our highway superintendent.
I will stay away from the highway superintendent.
That's the last one. Okay.
Happy board. Selling seeds of content everywhere. Sprinkled with the discontent.
Jerry missed one. Jerry, he knows where you had, Jerry. Did he miss one? Jerry, you missed one.
God, I went through so many of those, I thought I had it.
That's the important one, too.
Yeah. So it gave you any reason to be looking west.
Right.
Must've been stuck together. Okay, thanks for finding that.
This is paperclip that goes somewhere around there.
Is that all for...
And that is it. That is all. Step around there and take it.
Chris, if you'd reach out to me sometime this weekend and tell me. I don't know, after that long talk, the whole, he might be looking west.
Do they need my signature? You guys can skip me with a couple of these.
Oh. Graced with another one.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'll stand.
All rise.
Uh, it is nine thirty.
You got three out of five.
Next item on our agenda is a public hearing, and this is to discuss and consider action on an application by Ninety Seven Ranch LLC for an amendment to the Lincoln County Comprehensive Future Plan Use Plan amending certain land from transitional agriculture to residential acreage on property located at forty-nine, forty-four North Splinter Road and described as Margaret's first administrative subdivision of part of the southeast quarter, of the southeast quarter of Section fifteen, Township fourteen north, range thirty-one west of the six P M, Lincoln County, Nebraska. Lincoln County, Nebraska County, Nebraska.
I'm sorry, it's a typo.
Uh, looked like it was.
The second time either.
Could you repeat that, Chair, and get all that?
My fault.
State who you are as ma'am and...
Judy Clark, Lincoln County Planning Administrator. Um, these three agenda items all involve the same property, so just so you're aware of that. They are required to be separate, but they are the same property. So this first one that you're looking at is an application to amend the Lincoln County Comprehensive Land Use Plan from transitional ag to residential acreage. Um, in order to rezone a property, it's the duty of the Planning Commission to ensure that the comprehensive plan is in conformance with the requested rezoning. And a comprehensive plan can be updated, um, and amended as the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners feels appropriate. So therefore, prior to doing the rezoning on this property, the land use, comprehensive land use plan does have to be amended. Now, the reason for the rezoning, transitional agriculture, um, requires a minimum of three acres. The only way to get this property split, because it's a four point six acre lot, they're wanting to split it into two separate parcels. In order to get it split, that means one of the parcels is going to be less than three acres, so the rezoning would be required to do the subdivision. Um, the applicant is here in the audience. If you have any questions, or if you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to help.
So there will be one three-acre subdivision?
Three point six, yep.
Three point six, and then there'll be...
A one acre.
A one acre.
Yep.
So, so this was a transitional?
It was a transitional agricultural, um...
And did our, was, was our, originally, way back, was our transitional ten?
Yes, um...
And then we went ten to three?
Yep. Prior to two thousand and twelve, any development out in the county required over ten acres to, to build a residential structure on. Um, in two thousand and twelve, when Lincoln County updated their comprehensive plan and the zoning regulations, uh, there was a lot of discussion because by requiring the ten acre lots, that took some agricultural property out of agricultural production. And you would get these ten acre lots that the people just wanted to build a house, and then you would have another eight, nine acres that just kind of grew to weeds or, you know, whatever. And so the Planning Commission at that time felt that allowing for the three acres in an ag district would be more beneficial to agricultural property owners.
Okay. Uh, so we do have a public hearing. Anybody wish to, uh, comment in regards to this Comprehensive Future Land Use Plan?
Think it's necessary to have the landowner up and up.
They don't want to speak, I don't think. You've asked, you've given them opportunity.
Is there anyone that wishes to speak at this public hearing in regards to the Lincoln County Comprehensive Future Land Use Plan amending certain land from transitional agriculture to residential acreage on property located at forty-nine, forty-four North Splinter Road? One last request, anyone wishing to comment at this public hearing? It is nine thirty-five, we will close the public hearing. And what action do we need to take, Judy?
I think you need to have a motion to close the public hearing, and then the second and vote like three.
Mister Chair, I move that we close the public hearing?
Second. We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any further discussion?
I, I do have some discussion that would relate to Judy, if you could come up, Judy. This, mine is going to have more to do with the administrative subdivision, but I don't want to get the cart before the horse, okay? So if we, uh, I know that we're not on that, but I'm gonna ask the question. In looking at the lot, the lot one, I am not sure I understand why that does not go to the property line.
Um, reason being is there's a quonset to the north of that property, and the other buildings, they wanted all the existing buildings to be on one lot.
Oh, no, I, I...
Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, but that, that is...
Yeah, it's kind of a weird shaped lot. I, I would definitely...
Well, I mean, you know, I've never seen a property line that, I mean, property not go to the property line if you looked at it.
Yep, but that is what they wanted, um, so we tried to figure out a way of getting that quonset that's on the north side attached to the acreage on the south side, and it was best to leave space between, so that that, um...
So, so down the road, if they were to sell one or the other of these, they would landlocked, in fact?
No, because you've got that twenty-foot access easement. So, we require that twenty-foot access easement remain in place so that they have access to the county road, Splinter Road.
So, uh, the, the only thing is, I'm not an attorney, but access easements a lot of times go with the property. And, and would that be the case?
I believe so.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you. That answers my question.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Brunz.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Wulver.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed now at nine thirty-seven. Okay, next item. It's another public hearing. Discuss and consider action on an application by Ninety Seven Ranch LLC to rezone certain lands from TA one, transitional agricultural.
Excuse, excuse me, Chairman. Tyler, weigh in, but I think we have to now consider an action on this first item, separate?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, excuse me.
So we need a, we'll, we'll need a motion, Chair, to...
Okay, so now we have to have an action on that, uh, changing of the Comprehensive Future Land, Land Use, correct?
Yes, sir. Are you ready for a motion?
I am, sir.
Chairman, I would move to approve the application by Ninety Seven Ranch LLC, Adam Steffes, enclosed parentheses, for an amendment to amend the Lincoln County Comprehensive Future Land Use Plan for certain land from transitional agricultural to residential acreage on property located at forty-nine, forty-four North Splinter Road and described as Margaret's first administrative subdivision of part of the southeast quarter, of the southeast quarter of Section fifteen, Township fourteen north, range thirty-one west of the six P M, Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Williams.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Wulver.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Okay, got that one taken off.
Yes, sir.
Okay, next item on our agenda is another public hearing to discuss and consider action on an application by Ninety Seven Ranch LLC to rezone certain lands from TA one, transitional agricultural to an R one rural estates residential district on property located ninety-four, ninety-nine, uh, excuse me, forty-nine, forty-four North Splinter Road and described as Margaret's first administrative subdivision of part of the southeast quarter, of, of the southeast quarter of Section fifteen, Township fourteen north, range thirty-one west of the six P M, Lincoln County, Nebraska. So at nine forty, we will open this, uh, public hearing. Judy, would you like to comment, please?
Judy Clark, Lincoln County Planning Administrator. Again, I'm not really sure what I need to say, 'cause I pretty much just said it in the last one, but, um, this is just the second step. Once the comprehensive plan is amended, then you are able to rezone the property because it would be in conformance with the comprehensive plan. If you have any questions, happy to help.
Anyone have any questions or comment in regards to this public hearing?
Judy, do the planning staff have any objection to this?
No, planning staff has no objections to this. Um, we had a Planning Commission meeting, and it was a unanimous vote on both of the items, and it seems like a good fit for the area. This area is fairly close to the city of North Platte's two-mile jurisdiction, and that does seem to be trending towards small rural acreages.
Good question, Counselor, but I did note that on the first procedure, it was unanimous by your, by your board.
Judy, can you tell me, was there any opposition from the public at the Planning Commission meeting?
Um, there was one neighbor that did come in and had some opposition. She had quite a few questions. Um, by the end of the meeting, I believe she just wanted to voice her opinion and said that she was okay with what was going on.
Did that individual live to the south?
Uh...
To the west.
North and west, I think, yes.
Okay, I understand that, thank you.
Yep.
Um, I was in attendance at that meeting, and I felt like, um, the individual did a great job of expressing her concerns, and it was primarily about not wanting to set a precedence with, um, changing T one transitional agriculture to R one rural estates residential district. I think the residential kind of throws up some red flags for people. And I felt like you, and particularly Aaron Edwards, did a great job in answering the concerns, and, and I felt like, um, the vote reflected that it wasn't setting a precedence. Any other development moving forward would have to go through the same application and hearing process, correct?
Very, very similar, and if they were to do a big, large area with multiple residential structures or multiple lots, it would go through another, um, process also, conditional use application more than likely, so, yeah.
Is there anyone else that has comments in regards, in regards to the, uh, rezoning from TA one transitional agricultural to an R one rural estates residential district?
Judy, would the transition from a TA one to an R one be something that was comp, compri, uh, ran out of English. Was that something that was considered by the Future Land Use Plan?
Um, yes, if you look at the overall Future Land Use Plan, there are multiple areas in the county that, um, are side by side with transitional ag. Transitional ag is meant to be, it's right around all of the villages. So you go your, your city, and then you have transitional ag. And it's meant to be because that's how your cities are gonna grow. They're gonna grow out. So surrounding all of the villages, surrounding, um, the city of North Platte, you have this transitional agricultural district. And that is meant because it's, it's probably not gonna be ag forever. Because as communities grow, they're gonna start reaching out into that transitional ag area for things like residential, um, sometimes for commercial-type properties, things like that. Because that is the intent of a transitional ag district, is to transition eventually from agricultural to more of a intensive use.
Answer your question, sir?
The only comment I'd make is that's, I, I'm a little hesitant to do this, but that's why we have the process. They followed the process. Planning Commission looked at it, studied it, made their recommendation. I think the process worked.
Any other comments, discussion in regards to this public hearing?
Mister Chair, I move that we close the public hearing?
Second. Say we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing at nine forty-five, any... Any discussion on that point? Roll call, please.
Burns.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, based off of.
Let me offer that first. So I'm actually going to put a copy of the Lincoln County Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Maps into the record for this matter as Exhibit 1.
Okay. Based off of our comprehensive plan, and particularly with regard to the future land use plans being added to the application as Exhibit 1, which is part of our record and the recommendations of the planning director and staff, particularly her testimony provided today, and the recommendation of the planning commission and their unanimous resolution approval of Resolution Number Z23-001 Alpha that was passed on March 14, 2023, I would move that we approve the application by 97 Ranch LLC, Adam Steffes, Adam Steffes, in closed parentheses, to rezone certain lands from TA1 Transitional Agriculture to an R1 Rural Estates Residential District on property located at 4944 North Splinter Road and described as Margaret's First Administrative Subdivision of part of the southeast quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 15 Township 14 North Range 31 West of the 6th PM Lincoln County, Nebraska. That would be my motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
We could have read that back.
Medians every corner in the world, aren't they?
Always. There's not enough time in the day for all the good ideas.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Burns.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye. Thank you all. Okay, next item on our. Okay, next item on our agenda is to discuss and consider action on an application by 97 Ranch LLC for Steffes Third Administrative Subdivision on property located at 4944 North Splinter Road and described as Margaret's First Administrative Subdivision, part of the southeast quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 15 Township 14 North Range 31 West of the 6th PM Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Again, Judy Clark, Planning Administrator for Lincoln County. With this, since the comprehensive plan has been amended and the zoning has been amended, then this subdivision can meet all the requirements of the comprehensive plan and the zoning regulations, and therefore can be subdivided as presented. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to help.
I would have a question, Judy. So that, you know, we talked about the process not working. Could you tell me a little bit about notification to those being affected in the immediate neighborhood? Was it just a matter of public notice? Did they receive something in the mail to make them aware of it?
Okay, so as required by law, whenever you do an amendment to a comprehensive plan or a rezoning, you're required to provide public notification in three forms. The first form is a public notice that is published in a newspaper of circulation. So we published it 10 days prior to the planning commission meeting in the North Platte Telegraph. The second form of notification is a poster posted, you have to post the property. So there's a big white poster that's posted on the corner of the property notifying anybody that drives by that they're, when the two meetings are held. And then also required by law, you send out notifications, personal letter by certified mail to neighboring property owners that abut the property within 300 feet of that property. So it's published in the Telegraph, the property is posted, and they also receive certified letters.
Pretty good notice.
It is a good notice. The only, you know, the only comment that I would have is, since we're in a, really a rural area, sometimes 300 feet doesn't mean much, and especially if there's, you know, some 15, let's say there's three acre pieces of property. So we go within 300 feet, that usually catches a property around it, but you know, there might be six or eight people up and down the road or something in this kind, in this particular kind, we might want to, we might not want, the planning commission might want to think about, or in this, this kind of an area that we extend that, maybe to 900 feet or whatever the case may be, or something more rural in nature, just a comment for down the road, that's all.
Judy, did one of the planning commission members reach out of his own direction to the neighbors, I believe he said within a quarter of a mile?
Well, that's great.
Yes, one of the planning commissioners did do that, made phone calls to neighboring property owners, and I believe he did say within a quarter of a mile. So these individuals got even an additional notification because he did reach out on his own.
I believe that was planning commissioner Erin Edwards.
That is correct.
And you know, I'm not even talking about this one, I'm just talking in the future because, you know, this is, when we went from 10 to 3, you know, now we have three prop, or could have three properties with what we used to have one property. And so this particular transitional area that we're in, since I think 2012, might just give it some thought down the road so that any individual doesn't need to take that on his own, but it would just give better notice to them.
And that could be something that could be up for discussion. We follow state statute when it comes to public notification. Now, when we're looking at confined animal feeding operations, our zoning code did extend that to meet the setback distance. So we do go out a little bit further with that, and I believe our wind tower generation actually has that in there too, so that we reach out further.
It just can't be less than.
Just can't be less than, yes, that is correct.
I will say that the couple of inquiries I received about it were because they did see the post on the property, and it was just phone calls, you know, wanting to ask a few basic questions, so I do believe it worked as intended.
We have a motion and a second.
We do not have a motion.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the application by 97 Ranch LLC, Adam Steffes, for Steffes Third Administrative Subdivision on property located at 4944 North Splinter Road, as described as Margaret's First Administrative Subdivision, part of the southeast quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 15 Township 14 North Range 31 West of the 6th PM Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Second.
Now we have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
I think it's pronounced Margrease.
Margrease.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Adam, it was nice to see that your brothers showed up at the other hearing and supported you, so.
Your brother supported you, too?
That had me all in.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Woller.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Just the one place, correct? Sure. Chairman, it must be Commissioner Day here today, because we also should recognize our former colleague Walt Johnson.
Exactly.
From North Platte, rural North Platte.
I knew that face was familiar, he was a former commissioner.
Welcome, Commissioner. You're sitting in good company. Lane Anderson, Keith County Commissioner, remember Lane? Yeah. Don't be plotting against the emperor over there.
Good morning, Walt.
Good to see you, Walt.
It is 10:00 AM. Next item on our agenda is to discuss and consider the TBX Pilot Program for Employee Benefit Administration Software. And Rebecca, I believe you would like to discuss that with us?
Yes, about a year ago, NACO, the Nebraska Association of County Officials, asked us if we would participate in a pilot program for basically benefit administration. It was kind of twofold, to make it easier for our payroll people and to kind of allow the employees to maybe know, have better access to learn more about their benefits. We learned a lot through the process. Like I said, it's been about a year now. Unfortunately, this is one of those pilot programs where, at this point, NACO, as well as Sarah and I, feel that it's probably not, probably not the perfect fit, so therefore we are asking to be taken out of the TBX Pilot Program. There was eight counties that were involved in this program. I believe we are the second one now to ask to be pulled out. TBX did say they would allow the eight counties to stay on if they decided to, but quite honestly, it doesn't, right now, we're doing twice the work, so it really does not make sense to do that. So I do think there is a need. NACO is going to continue trying to develop or find a partner for this program. One thing became very clear to both Sarah and I, the employees really do not understand their benefits. There's a lot of things that came to light that I think we could do better, and hopefully with the right system that would help people understand those better, but TBX is not the fit. So honestly, we're going to go back to the old way, where we're going to do it all pretty much by hand.
Sure. So Becky, to refresh everyone's memory, particularly mine, what were we actually going to supposedly streamline by doing things electronically? Is that what we were, or we were headed for?
Yes, and I think down the road, electronically is ultimately in the future where it's going to end up, but basically, the employees were supposed to go in and put their own information in the system. They put it in once, and then it basically transferred out to all their benefits. I'll be honest, Sarah did 90% of the people. She went in and did 90% of the employees and got them signed up.
Me too. I think I was in Sarah's.
Yeah, she, she, she pretty much helped the road department, the sheriff, I mean, she, she pretty much, she's, she's become very good on the system.
Made it very simple to me.
Sarah has.
Sarah understands the system, yes.
I couldn't see a problem.
She's, she's been very good about helping employees do that, but once you put the data in, that it was supposed to send that to Blue Cross and life insurance, everything, so it wasn't.
So it was a transparency thing of transcending every.
Yeah, so you didn't have to keep putting the same information into all the different systems.
So you say it was supposed to, but didn't?
None of the files have ever been sent to the life insurance. I'm still having to go into the system for life insurance and send everybody's life insurance stuff in. None of the file feeds have ever gone to the life insurance.
Yeah, so, but the file feeds never did go like they were supposed to. And this, but like I said, this is one of those things where it kind of proved to us there is a need for something, because there was one benefit through First Concord that after eight, it took eight months for somebody to realize they hadn't got their health reimbursement back, because they just didn't understand what they were supposed to get or how it was supposed to work. So when it came to light, then again, it came to light that the TBX files had never got to First Concord.
Okay, so it's, it's not just a cultural thing, it's an actual, there's a technical aspect of the pilot that's, there's a breakdown there?
Yes.
Because I can understand, I mean, a cultural thing, that, that takes prodding, and it takes time for an organization to adopt something, especially our organization when it comes to technology, I can understand that, but, okay.
It's, it's the files.
Good point, that it wasn't just our employees resisting the process, it was also the companies that it was supposed to be going to didn't follow up and do their double checks either, which is real concerning.
Yeah.
Yes, when you add new employees, delete new employees, I mean, it just, it just wasn't happening through the systems as it should have been, so therefore, you know, those issues just came up. Like I said, I do think in the future, and NACO has already told me they're going to keep looking for the right partner, or possibly maybe the MIP system will do something to integrate it with our payroll, our time and attendance and our payrolls and that software, but I guess right now, I'm asking that we, we end the. software. But I guess right now, I'm asking that we end the TBX Pilot Program.
So Becky, under this line item, we've got three action items. So the first step of this unwinding this is to get out of TBX and then move to these other topics to address where we want to have service.
Right, because these have to, if we move from TBX, it will affect the next two.
Okay. Colleagues?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve withdrawing from the TBX Pilot Program for Employee Benefit Administration Software.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just that I hope that NACO works to find something because this kind of technology is worthwhile and I think if we find the right one, it can streamline our process and create efficiencies that we can maximize, which is going to be important. But if we're duplicating work, that's not what we set out to do, so.
No, I mean, when you're doing double the work, it just doesn't make any sense.
Yeah.
And the company I worked for, we've been using an online sign-up for our benefit options for years. And it did take, you know, some coaching and sitting down with some of the employees. But once you get it established, it really is a time saver and you can go back and look stuff up very easily without having to call your office every time somebody has a question. So there is great value in finding a program that works for us.
It's just the right one. Like I said, we're, TBX as well, where that NACO is not going to roll this out to the other counties. So us eight counties are either, have to stick with it till the new NACO program comes out or cut our losses and do what we feel we need to do. So quite honestly, I think we're the second county to pull out. I would see the other six counties also ultimately pulling out too. I would believe in the future.
Guess that's the definition of a pilot program.
Yes. I mean, yeah, that's why you do a pilot, to see how it's going to work.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Woller.
I.
Weems.
Aye.
Hughley. Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye. Next item is to discuss and consider Allstate products for existing accounts and new hires in conjunction with the TBX program.
Okay. Ultimately, we had no choice about this. This went hand in hand with the TBX program. And honestly, the Allstate insurance products or what paid for the programming per se, the county didn't have a cost to use the TBX software, but we had to allow the Allstate insurance products and other products on there. I have no, I think Sarah and I talked about it, we have no problem and I think we can work through NACO and Allstate for those people that did sign up for the products. They can continue to have the products, they'll just have to do the billing to us. We'll have to figure out a billing process for that and to submit, get the billing and submit the money from the employees' checks. My issue with it is, when we've had these supplemental products, we have been very fortunate that we've had very good representatives for the most part that were willing to come to the county, talk to the employees, do this, do that. We have had no contact with Allstate at all through this whole process. I mean, we didn't even get billing for the first...
We still don't have billing.
We still don't have.
What we do is we take it out the employees' checks and I just send the checks to Allstate. I have not wanted to receive the bill from them. That's how we send the bill to Allstate.
I just, I didn't, like I said, the people that signed up for this program and took these benefits, I, we have no problem continuing to take it out of their checks and submit the payment, I guess, as we're not getting billed. But I'm going to ask that new hires not be allowed, not be offered this. If we want to offer us another supplemental insurance in conjunction with Colonial, who we've had for years and years, I don't have a problem with that. But I think we need to find a company where they'll have local representation that can at least come once in a while to, you know, to talk to employees or whatever the case may be. I mean, where we've honestly had no contact and obviously no, not even any billings.
So the point, so the act for, basically says, discuss and consider Allstate products for existing accounts and new, and new hires in conjunction with TBX. So what are you asking us to do?
I'm saying let the people that signed up for it keep it. It's not their fault the pilot didn't work. But I do not want to allow new hires to be allowed to sign up.
So if the motion were, to your preference, you would say, the motion would say, we will allow existing, but moving forward, we would not sign up new hires on this program.
Right, we would not offer it to new hires.
We don't even have any paperwork to allow new hires to sign up for it. Because it was only on the TBX system. I don't even have any paperwork for new hires to fill out to accept the Allstate insurance. So if the, if the new hires that even took the insurance would come to me and say, I have a claim, I wouldn't have any paperwork to even give them to get ahold of anybody to file a claim. Because it was all on the TBX system.
Yeah, at this point.
Becky, if we're not receiving billings for the premiums, are they even getting coverage? Do we know?
That was all, I don't know. They should have all got contacted people that signed up through Allstate.
Okay.
So we, I mean, I don't even know who we've talked. I mean, I guess we can figure out. That's a good question, Tyler. I don't know.
Second question.
We've been sending premiums.
Second question becomes, if we no longer have the TBX system and we don't have access to the documentation, how do people with that product use it?
Well, I'm assuming when we separate from Allstate, NACO said that they would be supportive of whatever, what direction we chose. So NACO is going to help us kind of establish what we need to do for moving forward for that process. So I'm assuming we will get some information from Allstate, we'll have to, as part of that process.
Becky will remember that we had an individual, and I'm not going to mention the company, Becky knows who it is, that serviced this county so good for 20 years. Come in all the time, meet with the people, everybody knew him, worked great. Individual left and the thing just went like this. So it has a lot to do with who services a product, you know, and made Becky's life miserable once things changed, but, so.
I think the last time that the Benefits Committee met, we discussed that Colonial would be the only one that we would be going with, with the supplementals. So, Mr. Chairman, I would move that for the existing accounts with Allstate, we continue to allow them based on some follow-up as far as whether or not coverage is enforced, but that all new hires in conjunction, all new hires of the county, that that product is not offered to them.
Your motion is contingent upon verifying that there is.
Contingent upon verifying that we do.
Because Tyler's point is spot on.
Well taken, yeah. We don't know whether they have coverage or not.
How do you know?
Yeah.
But should it be, in fact, in place, that coverage be enforced, we allow those employees to maintain it, at least for this term.
We will probably have to work through Mike Bowden at NACO to see what, like I said, we were hands-off on the...
Are you confident? I'll second, so we can discuss, Chair.
Okay.
Okay, so following up on that, so you're confident we can resolve, we can know?
Yes, I mean, we'll have to.
We can determine this. I mean, seems to be a lot of ambiguity to...
Well, like I said, it was, we had no choice. It had to be on that system. It was, we had no choice. So Mike Bowden through NACO, I think, can help us work through this.
Okay.
What product did Allstate provide?
Life insurance.
Supplemental life.
Yeah, it was like, no, the supplemental life was through Madison National Life. Because that was like the, the Allstate was like the hospital indemnity and all that stuff. So I don't know if the people that signed up for that extra Allstate, I don't know if Allstate got in touch with them and sent them out extra stuff or not. I didn't personally sign up for any of that extra stuff, so.
It was like that enhancer bundle?
Yeah, the benefit enhancer bundle and like the hospital indemnity, those were those things through Allstate.
But to further clarify this, the employee had to have signed for this in order to work and be put in place.
And I have a list of the employees that did sign up for that. So maybe I could reach out to some of those employees that did sign up for the extra stuff.
Think that's imperative that we do that.
To see if they did, Allstate did mail them out some extra stuff.
And it would be appropriate to let them know that if they have not received from them, that they should contact your office, correct?
Yeah, we'll just, we'll just follow up through the list.
Yeah.
We'll contact everybody. And like I said, we'll have to work through NACO.
I personally have not encountered an insurance company that didn't send me a bill. Maybe we've had the wrong company. I don't know. I kind of appreciated having them. Notice at least I knew it was covered.
We waited several months waiting for a bill, but then we kind of talked to the auditor and it was like, we'll submit it so you have the, you know, their payments are there. So we did.
Sounds like one more reason why it was good for us to vote to withdraw it at that time.
Yes, yes. Any other discussion on this topic? We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call please.
Brunz.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next item is to discuss and consider authorizing the chairman to sign a Blue Cross Blue Shield Amendment to allow the county back into the Blues enroll system.
I did not get the paperwork from Blue Cross Blue Shield, so I don't know if you want to table this or just authorize the chairman to sign it when we get it, or...
I would think it would be appropriate to just authorize the sign. Mike come in tomorrow the next day.
Yeah, we'll get it from the, basically, this will allow us back in the Blue Cross Blue Shield administration system, so Sarah can add and delete employees as necessary.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we authorize you to sign the Blue Cross Blue Shield Amendment to allow the county back into the Blues enroll system, providing that amendment does meet the approval of Deputy County Attorney.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call please.
Hughley.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye.
Woodruff. Aye. Okay, we will move on to our next agenda item, discussing, consider resolution to place a temporary moratorium on development of commercial and/or utility grade wind and solar energy conversion systems and the issuance of conditional use permits.
Mr. Chairman, last week, while attending the Planning and Zoning Conference, Commissioner Weems and I were looking into some of the things that we have in place with regard to commercial and/or utility grade wind and solar energy conversion systems. As far as the language that we have, through that process, we came to understand that there's not a whole lot that we have in place to really guide any potential development of those types of systems within Lincoln County. Commercial and wind grade, commercial and utility grade wind systems are merely a conditional use that can be placed in any A1 or TA1 zone in Lincoln County, which comprises most of the county. And solar arrays really aren't distinguished from what you may find on a pole barn or to utilize for a pivot or anything, a windmill in that case. And so there's no differentiation there and they're just really an accessory use for all zones within Lincoln County. And we don't really have anything to backstop a potential development that may be adverse to a particular region of Lincoln County. I don't know that this is something that Commissioner Weems and I are bringing forward to say that, look, we don't want these things in Lincoln County at all. We're looking for making sure that our language is correct so that we can appropriately plan for future development in Lincoln County. And right now, our language and our comprehensive plan and our planning and zoning regulations doesn't really allow that. So Commissioner Weems and I had discussion with our county attorney and our deputy county attorney this last week and kind of laid out, what does that process look like? And we determined it's going to take some time to make sure that we get this language correct. But in the interim, if an applicant were to come today or tomorrow with an application for conditional use, as long as they meet those conditional uses, there's not a whole lot that we can do. So we're asking for a temporary moratorium for a year or less, should we come up with that language with the Planning and Zoning Commission sooner, that would put a stop on all of these until we can get that language correct. So that's the reason why this was brought forward for the board to discuss and consider today.
I didn't understand. Was that a motion or do I?
So I would, I would move, I can make an emotion, absolutely. I would move that, and what's the number on this?
Oh seven.
Oh seven?
I would move that this board considers and approves Resolution Number 2023-07 to place a temporary moratorium on the development of commercial and/or utility grade wind and solar energy conversion systems and the issuance of conditional use permits in Lincoln County.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Charlie, I'll lay it out.
Does this affect solar systems for soft wells?
No, no. This clearly differentiates commercial use and utility grade use.
Will it be soft well over 100 kilowatts? I hope not.
If feeding the neighbors, if it is, water.
So that is, that is something Tyler points out. You know, this is for conversion systems in excess of 100 kilowatts for both wind and solar conversion systems.
And I'm sorry, can you clarify, when will the moratorium be reconsidered?
One year.
One year.
Unless we...
Unless we bring forward language.
Develop a plan that is satisfactory, call, when a majority adopted, moving forward, then it would...
I agree that it's good to have some definitions in place before moving forward.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. Roll call please.
Brunz.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen, for working on that.
Yes.
Okay, next item on our agenda, discuss and consider pending construction of the Region 51 Emergency Management Storage Facility.
Morning.
Good morning. Could you inform us who you are, sir?
Brandon Myers, Director of Region 51 Emergency Management. I admire your hairstyle this morning. What's that? I admire your hairstyle this morning. So, yeah. We talked about putting a new storage building up for emergency management up by the Lincoln County Dive Team about almost a year and a half ago.
Dive Team.
By the Dive Team building.
Out on 10th Street.
In between Dive Team and...
10th Street? Yeah, on 10th Street. Kind of put it on hold because fluctuating markets, slowdowns on building materials getting here, we're kind of starting to run out of time that we need to move forward with this.
Uh huh.
So I guess next steps are, can we start moving forward and getting this built?
Did, you'll have to refresh my memory. Did we have some plans as far as size and material and that sort of thing?
Metal building and we were looking at 40 by 60.
And what kind of a number, or do we know?
Don't know how much it's going to cost. I know, I think we put, what, $150,000 into a new building for it.
That was my next question. What was in the budget for this project?
$150,000.
For this fiscal year?
Yeah.
So Brad, again, to refresh my memory, Brandon, were we talking about a pre-engineered building? You can just get codes on and build?
Um, yeah, basically, it's just a cement slab and the building with some doors and weather insulated, so that the stuff that we are storing in there keeps.
Does the building need to be temperature controlled for the equipment that's in there? So there's that additional expense.
Brandon, what are you currently doing with the equipment?
It's sitting in a rented storage building now. It's not...
And what is that ramp?
Uh, three, I want to say 375 a month. Plus utilities. Plus utilities.
Is that, oh, it is heated, okay.
No.
I didn't think so. That was going to be my question.
It's not climate-controlled at all.
What needs to be heated? You said the things that you have would need to be temperature-controlled. What are those things?
So, we needed insulated, climate-controlled.
And for what?
But for what needs the climate control?
Some of the stockpile stuff that we have, so liquids, gloves, things like that that have to be and need to be maintained at a certain temperature. Some of our electronic hardware that we maintain.
In the location, have you touched, excuse me, base with planning and zoning, is there enough real estate there for another building?
We have not, because we just kind of put everything on hold to wait for, hopefully, supply chains to ease up better and...
Okay.
Bernard, it sounds like he needs to meet with Building and Grounds.
Probably would make more sense. You're throwing up more questions than your answers, Brandon, because I'm sitting here wondering how we're getting by without an unheated building now.
Well, what I was told was we needed to get your guys' approval before we even really started venturing further down than just the thought process of it.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Joe. I was still waiting for the answer to your question, though. Didn't get it.
What, seriously, no? What's the deal? How are we functioning now with an unheated building? What crucial differences are moving forward? Are we degrading the quality or the integrity of what we've got and shortening the life of its use?
We are. Like, the stockpile materials that we've got, the shelf life is going to be, we're probably going to have to start getting rid of it here in the next year, if not sooner.
And you attribute that to the fact you do not have a kind of...
Extreme cold, extreme heat. Some of our electronic equipment sits in my office instead of down there or other places that can stay in climate control, but they're taking up vital space that we needed.
I'm sorry to retrace my question, but specifically, what product are we talking about again?
A lot of the cleaning supplies.
Cleaning supplies.
That we had to stockpile with. And then, some of our radio equipment, some of our, like our RapidTag machine that we use for disasters, stuff like that are sitting, not in the storage facility that we would rather it be in, because it's not climate-controlled. So a lot of, some of the computers that go in there and stuff.
So at 6% interest, $150,000, $9,000 a year, we're not even paying $9,000 a year rent, right?
No.
So if I were a private sector builder, I'd question whether I was, I'd have to weigh the cost of my inventory and that longevity, that shelf life issue against committing $150,000 to the building and consider whether or not I'm getting a good value, because bottom line, we have to get a good value. So, back to the chairman's point, maybe Michaela and I being on the Building and Grounds Committee should visit with you and hammer out some of these challenging questions, because they're questions that are legitimate on our part. And I'm sure a lot of them you've thought through, Brandon, I'm not implying that. But it's been a while since we talked about this, right? And then the other portion that jumps in my head is, the pandemic drove a lot of this requirement for inventory or compelled us to have this inventory. So the question would be then, how much of it are we going to have moving forward? How much of it's going to be essential and necessary?
Now, what we also look at too is what, by federal standards, state standards, what they start throwing down on us that we have to keep on hand.
So then, that segues into another question. Most of this board is very high on interlocal agreements, as you are, and you're a prime example of how well that works to work with other counties. So, is it something that should be evaluated rather than rush into a project now, ultimately what's going to be a tight window, budget-wise, for the new budget, old budget, slice of new budget, to explore perhaps a regional approach to this, where we bring in partners, the smaller counties that...
Well, and it's not just that, it's for the building, it's also our ambulance, our emergency operation, mobile emergency operation that we need to keep inside somewhere, our trailer for our cert stuff, things like that. So it's not just the stockpile of stuff, there's our emergency management equipment that is stored in there as well.
Okay, very good. Good point, thank you.
So, if I understand correctly, the vehicle that you purchased a month or two ago...
Yes.
That would be stored in this building?
Yes.
That would be your plan? Where is it stored now?
Right now, it's actually at a mechanic shop, getting the fuel drained out and cleaned out and new fuel filters. But it will be going into the storage unit we have now.
Okay.
Some of the other problem we have is the leaks that are in the one that we have now that we're renting. It is slowly starting to cause issues with our equipment that's in there. It limits where we can put stuff, long walls, back walls and stuff.
Leaks in that particular building that you're renting now?
For 375 a month, I think the landlord should be interested in fixing leaks.
We've attempted, and through the company that he goes through, we've gotten, well, they've come out, they've looked, they've tried this, they've tried that, but it still hasn't been fixed properly.
Brandon, do you know the square footage of the facility you're in now?
I think it's 30 by 50 or 25 by 50. So we're going to expand it just a little bit more.
What do you think would be the best course of action here, get together?
What I would like to do is, because I'm not, I would like personally to myself, visit the facility, the existing facility, and maybe take a look at your vehicle we're talking about, so I can get a little bit better feeling where we're at. I'd like to do that myself.
What's Building and Grounds thinking?
I would concur. The more we can gather now, because we're going to make sure that we're doing the most efficient thing and solving Brandon's problems, challenges for storage and so forth. But I am concerned, maybe we're overselling the need for some of this inventory. And so, not questioning Brandon's research, but he's, and I don't want to assume anything, Brandon, but you're just taking the here and now and assuming that forward as necessary inventories and storage needs for some of the COVID things? Or is this just simply fire and rescue primarily items?
Well, we've talked, and even before we started stockpiling, of thinking that we probably, it'd be on a better interest for us to have a building instead of renting it all the time.
Sure.
Because then we're under that obligation of, well, like we have, we have a problem, how long does it take to get fixed, instead of us being able to do that?
Well, once we own it, it's ours, we have to fix everything.
Yeah.
So there's that.
And pay the utilities.
And pay the utilities.
How much inventory do you have that is actually to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic? Because it's my understanding that most of that type of equipment is actually through West Central Development Health District, not through Emergency 51 Management.
Actually, not a lot of that is through West Central Health or anything like that. A lot of it is what we had grant money that we were told to buy with from the state and the federal government. I'd say probably a quarter of the facility has got shelves full of stuff, pallet full of stuff.
Might only ask, because the Building and Grounds also gets with city planning, so that if we do end up building on this parcel, we know that we're going to meet setbacks and all that stuff before we put it out to bid and get going.
Yep.
I agree.
Great idea.
Also, I think it might be worth, I personally have not been in the Dive Team's building. I've been out to the location. I wonder, I don't know how much storage space there may be in that building, where we can just consolidate. You've been in there, that's not an option.
Yeah, they don't have...
Full of, chock-full of nuts out there, though.
Okay.
I would ask that if we're going to go down this path, and Building and Grounds are going to look at it, storage is a need through all departments in the county. And so if we're going to spend money, if we're going to spend money on a storage facility, then we make it a county-wide storage facility, and we have a space in there for records storage as well, because that's, I mean, our fourth floor is jam-packed with storage that the clerk has to keep for elections and everything else. That's something that we need to keep in mind. If we're going to spend the money for a storage facility for one department, that we probably widen the scope just a little bit.
Very good. Do you want to start with Kent and I getting together with Brandon?
I think so, because, you know, I'm kind of beating him over the head, and he's got no insulation.
Right.
He's got a hard ass on.
And he's got a bum leg, but he's got a big fist on him. I know, I can't run very fast anymore, so I don't want to make you mad. I think we do need to sit down with Brandon and talk about, and revisit this, because it's pretty stale in my mind, what our needs were. And they are evolving. And to Chris's point about storage, that's been an ongoing discussion, or talking up space for storage.
And I don't think construction's ever going to get any cheaper. So, if it is something our county needs, you know, future use also, it does validate us taking a hard look at it.
Taking a hard look, but we're going to have other budget challenges, too. So just because, you know, you'd like to have it. If we're functioning without it, we've got a lot of challenges in budget this year.
That's why I say if.
Huge.
So, let's coordinate visiting the existing facility. Joe wants to go have a look at that as well. Building and Grounds probably wants to as well. And then get together with Brandon, okay? Does that sound like a plan?
I think it'd be good, because of the forum limitations that we, and I welcome Joe's visit, or first, because this is up his alley of expertise and knowledge of buildings. Joe can take a look at your existing facility and provide that perspective. And then Michaela and I can follow up with a visit later. But maybe in the next two weeks, if Joe can take a look, and then Michaela and I can subsequently take a look and have a conversation with you, sit down for an hour or whatever it takes.
Yeah, because that sounds... If Brandon has the time, we'll do it in the next couple of days, if it works with his timeframe.
It does.
And I have another meeting planned with Judy Clark at Planning and Zoning, so I can just ask her to take a look at that location and just start putting together some information there, too, just so we know.
Okay.
Just a reminder to the board, this has been a lit exemption in our budget for the last two years.
So we're up against a time limit?
Then you will have to look at, well, they've been understanding about the construction thing, but we'll have, whatever happens, we're going to have to look and see how that will affect that exemption, that lit exemption we've had for two years already. Okay?
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. So, if I'm reading everyone correct here, we're going to table this item?
I think we have to. And then, sooner than later, Brandon, let's get together with Michaela and I and you. And Joe, you know, Joe's up for the next couple of days. I don't know what your schedule looks like, the next week or 10 days, but the sooner the better, probably, on that.
I know, next Tuesday, we leave for a conference.
Okay.
But, yeah.
A week from tomorrow.
Everything, the rest of this week, I'm here.
We can get to, well, why don't we, why don't you converse with us after the meeting, and we'll compare states.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Jim.
Thanks.
We'll table that item. Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on our agenda is to discuss and consider authorizing the chairman to sign an insurance addendum to the professional design service agreement with Lee Davies Architecture for renovations to the probation office remodel project 301 to 311 North Dewey.
This is a hoop that I had made Mr. Davies jump through, simply for my own edification, and as a result of some prior projects that went bad for the county. All I did was add into his agreement the insurance requirements, which he has met. He signed that, I've signed that, and now, as soon as the board authorizes the chairman to sign it, the chairman can exercise his prior authority to sign the underlying contract with Mr. Davies as well.
Okay, so this requires a higher insurance amount.
No, this is simply stating what the insurance amounts are. It was just in addition to Mr. Davies' contract. I had no doubt he has the coverage, I just wanted to see it in writing.
Okay, and you have been satisfied that you have seen that?
Yes.
Is there any extra expense to Mr. Davies?
I don't know, I'll let him speak to that. He says yes from the back.
Mr. Davies, would you please come up and speak to us?
Yes, there was. Because on the previous last two ones we did, which was prior to some of the reasons why he's doing this, which makes sense why he's doing it, I get it. You know, we did not, you did not require that level of insurance, so I didn't have that. And yeah, so there was, it added expense for me to have that, so...
And what is the added expense?
I think it's going to be around two grand.
And you did not have that calculated into your fee?
No.
I would feel very comfortable since we had the previous agreement, and we had the written agreement with Lee that didn't have that in there. So this is something we're adding. If Lee could, if the architect could provide to, I'm going to guess, the county attorney's office, that billing or something of that additional cost, so we can document that. And I would think that would certainly be an appropriate adjustment to that contract amount myself.
Colleagues.
Because that wasn't a requirement of when any architect did that, that wasn't asked to have that coverage. Do other architects have it? We may, or we may not. But that wasn't a requirement of this one, so that's just my viewpoint.
Almost sounded like one, didn't it?
I don't know what I said.
So...
Where are we at?
Play back.
It would be my motion to authorize the chairman to sign the insurance addendum to Professional Design Services Agreement with Lee Davies Architecture for the renovation of the Probation Office, pending documentation of that additional cost.
Let's not do a pending.
Oh, okay. Do we have it?
No, but Lee can get it to me, and we can simply do another addendum. I want to get this thing signed.
Okay, so, okay, so, I'll make a motion that we authorize the chairman to sign. That was easy.
Second.
Motion and a second.
For clarification, we're not going to talk about the $2,000. We're just going to sign the contract.
That's coming up later.
That'll be later.
That would be a later topic.
Got it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Hubley.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Lucky he's not that easy with my agreements.
Two minutes here.
You're easier to get along with, I guess, than I am. I must be a hard ass.
Give me that stuff, Lee, we'll do another addendum.
Yeah, I'll look at that. I'll go over there.
Okay, it's signed.
I didn't know if you needed to come up, Galvin, so easy that was, so...
Okay, next item on our agenda is discussing, consider authorizing the chairman to sign a contract with Dowhauer Construction for the probation office remodel project 301 to 111 North Dewey.
Do you have...
Do we have a contract?
Somebody better, because I sent the originals out the door.
State your name, please.
Galvin Parker, Wayne Dowhauer Construction.
Okay, tell us what you have with you.
I have the contract for your signature.
We have copies of those?
They're strictly serial.
I have a question.
Question.
What is the name of the construction company you're with?
Wayne Dowhauer Construction.
Is it still Wayne Dowhauer?
Yeah.
I'll be darned. You know, I didn't even know that. I always put Dowhauer. I think even on our, obviously, we don't on our contracts, but thank you very much, I appreciate it, Galvin.
Would you like, do we need more copies?
Tyler, I forwarded a copy of the contract that Lee sent to me, to you last week. Have you had an opportunity to look it over?
Uh, yeah, I did. You were sitting there, too?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, I did. And then, Lee actually brought in some clarification. Some of the terms and conditions I wanted to look at and see are actually part of the general conditions, the Exhibit A. It's a standard AIA contract. I've looked at a few of these. Seems to all be there.
Seems to all be there.
So this, this particular version is the one you signed up on?
That's the one I've reviewed, yes.
And previous, okay.
It was my understanding Tyler reviewed the contract, needed some additional pages. Is that correct, Tyler?
Yes.
And those were taken care of last week, so.
And what were those items?
It's a number of the standard terms and things that I need to see in the contracts to satisfy statute, one of those being like insurance for Dowhauer. I know they have it, in fact, I'm pretty sure they still have a certificate on file with the county from the bathroom project. But it does still have to be in the contract, obviously. There are a number of things that are taken up in the attachment there to the general conditions. In addition to that, there were some standard forms, equipment assessment, the employee certification affidavit, the free competitive bid document. All those things were taken care of on the backend.
Okay, notice in substantial completion, we have liquidated damages of $300 per calendar, calendar day after the substantial completion date of June 20, 2023.
Yes. That was, I noted that there was a liquidated damages clause in there. I've got no opinion on the amount thereof. To me, it's sufficient that there is a financial penalty. Twenty-one hundred bucks a week is not, nothing to sneeze at, so.
And Wayne Dowhauer Construction is aware of that?
Yes, that was in the specifications when we did.
Okay, thank you. Let me have a look. Okay, Joe, have you had a chance to look over this?
Looks fine to me, I perused it, but Tyler's.
Tyler, do you have any other questions in regards to that contract?
No, I got all my questions answered last week in a meeting with Commissioner Luler and our architects, so.
Okay, would you like to have copies of this for our own personal?
Yes, I would. Get some after. We can get those later.
Okay. Do I need to sign all three of these?
Yes, one copy is for the owner, one's for the architect, and one's for the contractor.
Probably get a motion, yeah, get a, get approval first. Sorry.
Are you ready? Mr. Chairman, are you ready for a motion?
Okay, we are at the point of discussing and consider authorizing the chairman to sign a contract with Dowhauer Construction for their probation office remodel project.
You must say I got this close.
Yes.
Colleagues.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that you sign a contract with Dowhauer Construction for the probation office remodel project 103 through 111 North Dewey in the amount of $325,293.
$325,000.
Thousand, sorry. Three hundred and twenty-five thousand, that'd be a great deal, thousand.
No kidding.
Three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, two hundred and ninety. I'm having a hard time with that amount. Three hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars.
We have a motion and a second.
As soon as we, as soon as we pick Chris up off of the floor.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I would just like to say that I appreciate Wayne Dowhauer Construction and all their staff on, on this. I've relayed my concerns about the overall project in previous meetings, so. But I do appreciate the work that you guys do.
Thank you.
I would concur with that. Thank you, Galvin.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other discussion? Rule call, please.
Luler.
Aye.
Hughley.
Go ahead.
Weems.
No.
Brunz.
No.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Three. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Lee.
I do have the copies of our insurance for this project and the builder's risk insurance.
Now, go to Becky. Go to Becky. Did you submit a copy of those through the E-architect?
I have not.
Probably let you guys work out however you wanna do it, but he'll wanna keep a copy of that on his file also. Usually that goes through there, but between Becky and Tyler, I know they'll handle it however it needs to be handled.
Okay, well, I'm concerned for our purposes, not for Lee's, so. As long as we've got one, he knows they're insured.
Thanks, Galvin, thanks, Lee.
Okay, um.
With him being our representative, he's supposed to be the one that enforces that, make sure they do it.
Okay, next agenda item is presentation of the Spice Works application for building and grounds department work tickets. It's not Spice Drills. I didn't say that. It's Spice Works.
I asked for this agenda item. I asked for this item to be put on the agenda. To back up to December, when we did our walkthrough at the jail, we discovered that we were having difficulty in how work orders were being initiated and processed. So Acting Building and Grounds Head at the time, Jeff Higgins and I, sat down and did some looking at the different programs. And Jeff suggested that we get with our IT department, that they had a system for reporting issues and initiating work orders that could be tracked and, and closed out. And it prevented items from falling through the cracks. So we sat down with Sheriff Jerome Kramer at the jail and decided to use them as a pilot program. So Dave Booker, Sheriff Kramer, and myself worked through some things. And I'm gonna let Dave Pate from our ID department take it from here, and he can explain the solutions that he came up for us and what we would like to roll out moving forward.
I'm Dave Pate, IT department.
Morning, Dave.
Good morning.
So for a while now, the IT department has been using a cloud-based ticketing system called Spice Works. Pretty simple, it's to the point. It also allows tracking of the work being completed. And with Michaela's recommendation to get onboard with this for the, for the building and grounds people, we were able to develop a very similar system that would work for buildings and grounds. And we piloted it out on the, the detention center and the sheriff's department. And it, it was successful. So the next step is we're going to roll it out to, to the rest of the county, but it will only appear on the department heads and their designated deputies' desktops. It'll work exactly like the IT ticket system, except that the descriptions of what you need will be more in line with building and grounds. We also have state personnel that Building and Grounds supports, and they will be able to submit a ticket directly through email. So they'll send an email to the ticket system, and it'll automatically create a ticket for Building and Grounds. That's pretty much it. I mean, it's a pretty simple system, and it does allow you to track everything you're doing. It gives accountability of what you've done. And for the IT department, we go through it once a year and show how many hours we've actually worked tickets. And you'd be surprised at how many hours you do. So, any more questions?
Dave, I sat in on one of your meetings on this. And if I understood it right, at least two of the commissioners, the building and grounds commissioners, would be included in the secret, like a carbon copy of everything?
Yes, that is already happening.
Maybe Jerry's getting it, since he was already on the building and ground. I'm not getting one.
I think it's you and Kent.
It should be me and you, Kent, because you came in to.
Yeah, I'm not seeing those.
Okay, we can make a change, so it shows up.
It is in the form of email.
Uh, you should get an email notification that a ticket was open. I'll double check the system, see if we.
And I forgot to ask you about it the other day.
How that rolled out.
Did you work this junk?
Spice Works, Spice Works sent me an invitation, and then I had to go to their website and enroll.
To legitimize the, maybe the email?
Yeah, you gotta register, and you can give it, it asks you for a username and password. Put in the username, and you get any password that you want. Those passwords don't expire.
Okay, I, I probably missed that email. That's probably on me.
That's no problem, I can get it, I'll tell you again.
I can, okay, thank you. Appreciate that. But just recapping what Michaela said, basically, we were dropping the ball, and it was not transparency between critical staff members, that essential staff members that were solving these problems, and middle and upper management that knew, had no idea whether or not it was resolved. So we were basically just creating a, a black hole where.
This should fill that void.
Where this should give us a structured response program, so everybody understands what, you know, what this was all about. And making sure we're accountable for who we handed this off to.
Absolutely.
And saying, hey, you know, hey, Joe, why didn't you, why didn't you follow up on this? What's the, what's the issue then?
And you will have the rights to monitor all of those tickets that are open, both y'all. The sheriff already has those rights to monitor the tickets.
I think it's a key, it's a great first step, is that between you and the maintenance staff and the elected official involved, you've already resolved a lot of this, I think, right, Michaela?
It has resolved a lot of it. If you recall, during our interviews of the building and grounds people, Booker spoke to it and said, you know, I think part of the problem in the past was some departments were using email communications, sometimes. Phone calls, text messages. There would be times I'd be walking through the buildings with a building and ground employee, and somebody'd say, oh, hey, by the way.
Drive-bys, yes.
Yeah, we have trouble with this. It was just a lot of things were falling through the cracks, through no fault of any one person's. This just helps streamline the process, gives accountability. I like the fact that I can go in and open a ticket up and look at it and see where we're at if we're waiting on parts. It eliminates a lot of phone calls and, and communication and lets Booker and his team focus on getting the work done.
It's a standardized system, so everything for maintenance requests will come directly through this system.
Yes.
You don't, there's no need for emails, there's no need for phone calls and texts, cuz everybody that will be submitting the tickets will have that shortcut right on their desktop.
I've, uh, I'm really excited about this. I've heard nothing but good things about it. And it's just another example of how a simple technology system can create and allow us to maximize efficiencies in the county, and so, well done.
Thank you.
And where all of our employees are already on it for initiating IT tickets, it'll be an easy transition. We just need to get the word out.
Yep, we do.
So this began with Building and Grounds in relation, in relation to the detention center and sheriff's office?
That's correct, we tried it there first.
And it will be available to all department heads and their deputies, correct?
That's correct. It'll be rolled out either this afternoon or tomorrow morning.
Sounds good.
And, and even the state employees that we work with will also have an option for using this.
I will send them an email where they can send their request to an email address, and that will automatically generate a ticket in the ticket system.
Okay, super.
Thanks a lot for all your work on it, Dave.
Yeah, Dave, you made this just.
We've all been working pretty hard on this, so.
But a very easy solution to kind of a complex problem. And because of your expertise and the work you did, it, it really, Booker can't say enough good about it, so.
All right, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you. We need on that average item, right? Next agenda item is discussion on the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant. Was this?
I asked for this item to be put on there. We all received an email last Monday from Judy Clark notifying us that the Department of Energy had a grant slout slash voucher program that counties can use. Lincoln County is pre-qualified, so we do not need to do an app, a competitive application to have access to these funds. Judy checked, and the county is pre-approved for $76,220 of, um, federal money from the Energy Department. And there are many options for using this money. It can be used for technology upgrades. It can be used for purchasing equipment that helps with improving energy efficiency. It can also be used, and the, and the portion of it that caught my attention was the weatherproofing section. If you look at page 26 in the slide presentation that accompanied the email, we can use a voucher program for taking existing government buildings and making them more energy efficient. And I'm sure you were all looking at the, at the bills as they come across our desks today, but some of the natural gas bills that we're receiving on our county buildings seem to be very high. The dive team building, just for one month, was $53.96 for just the, the gas portion of it, which is pretty low. They don't have the heat turned up very high in there. Our weed building, we have a small heated room that we put all of our chemicals in, and the heat to the main part of the shop is turned very, very low in the winter time for the rest of the equipment. And their bill is over $227 a month. By touring the buildings, and I think Jason can testify to this in the road department building, the old insulation has fallen away from the walls. It'll address purchasing insulation. We're checking on if it pays for the labor for installing. We believe it does, but we would like confirmation. Replacing windows and doors, anything that encompasses weatherproofing existing buildings to make them more energy efficient, we believe is covered in this program. So it also encompasses solar energy, wind energy, to make existing government buildings have a backup energy source. So there is a deadline that's coming up. I believe it is April 28th for the pre-application paperwork to be submitted. And so I felt like we needed to get this on the agenda and have a discussion about it, so we can decide if that is something that we are interested in moving forward on. I did have a board meeting Wednesday night with West Central Nebraska Development District. They are, are area experts in applying for grants. They've used the voucher program before. And so I just asked Amber to take a look at the program and get, give us some feedback on her thoughts with it. They are staffing the material that I sent to them tomorrow, and she will follow up with me.
I think it'd probably be more appropriate for Judy to be handling this grant. She has experience with that. I did ask Judy, and I know Tammy's working on it as well, cuz I had some questions based off the email on whether or not there was a match requirement, a local match requirement on this. And so we're still waiting to, to find out that information, but.
When I met with Judy Tuesday morning, she had already sent an email questioning the grant match. There was nothing in the documentation that they shared with us. They told her they'd get back to her end of week, and as of this morning, they still had not.
To finish my point, I think that it, you know, pending that information, this. this may be a good opportunity for us to look at as far as getting some insulation, not only for weeds, but even building and grounds. I mean, that building, uh, is pretty frigid during the winter and pretty hot during the summer. So, um, I just want to make sure that we're not overextending ourselves just because there's a pot of money out there. If we have to pony up and, and expend some taxpayer money, I don't know. We've, we've got a lot of budgetary things, so I'd be interested to get that information back.
Yes, me too.
Jason, I have a question. Um, you probably don't off the top of your head what it costs for the natural gas to heat the office area in your facility. But do we not still heat the shops with used oil furnaces?
Uh, we use both, actually.
Because I know for 30-plus years, we've had waste oil furnaces in the shop and it's, it's hard for me to see anything more efficient than burning that up because typically nobody wanted it. Now that, uh, I think it's, the tables have turned, I think now it's in demand again. But you couldn't, you couldn't give it away literally. You had to pay people to take it away. So I, I thought the county was way forward thinking when they put those waste oil furnaces back in the eighties.
Yeah, we actually use both, but, uh, you get some of those cold periods, especially where the work flounders are opening and closing. Most of the time, both of them are running.
So you, have you got radiant heat tubes back there too? So that's all natural gas, of course.
Yeah.
So do you see, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead, finish.
So on that, in that vein, do you think that building, there would be ways to, well, first of all, we'd have to know what your energy audit says in order to quantify whether or not that would be a good application point to me, rather than just say, yeah, can we have 70,000 bucks, please? So if we can't, if we can't extrapolate numbers and arrive, number one, at our base expense and then two, determine in some way if there's gonna be significant cost savings moving forward, I don't know if that's, you know, would be an appropriate building to, to approach.
Yeah, I think that would be a, a great example. You could do a pretty easy rating on a lot of the obscenities that have zero insulation.
Zero insulation.
Because the weed office was brand new in 1991. And it's fully insulated, walls, because we used to leave material in all the spray trucks. We went around and worked on things and, and our, we did not have, uh, so to speak, a cold storage area. It was all common. So I don't know how much more efficiency you can create in that weed building personally to save a lot of money. But I could be wrong, but I see your building being a lot more of a, of a fuel hog, so to speak.
Yes, it is.
So what, so what is our next approach here? Do we need to gather some information?
We're waiting on information.
And how soon do you think we'll have that?
Uh, well, relatively quick. My hope is by the end of the week.
So maybe we can discuss this again on next week's.
The good thing is, is this isn't, the, the initial application isn't due until the end of next month. So we have time. Um, but I, I thank Commissioner Ruler for bringing it forward for discussion. It is something that we need to.
And my suggestion to look at buildings was just simply a suggestion, one of the uses.
Right.
Kent, I believe I sent you an email inviting you to tour because I haven't been in the dive building ever. So we can kind of look at it in a SASS. But today I just noticed the Hershey shop, um, Black Hills Energy bill that came across my desk. I mean, it was $664 for 30 days. So maybe looking at our outline buildings is also a good.
Yeah, I think it'd be a good thing to look at our other shops.
Yeah, and we can all work together and determine, um, you know, if, if there is indeed a need there. But starting with the basics of weatherizing buildings, I think is always a good idea for reducing our energy costs.
Okay, super.
So we'll, depends on the match.
We will, yeah, we need to know that as a very important, and we should know that by the end of this week, maybe.
Tammy and Judy are working on it.
Yeah, Judy was pretty confident that if there was a match requirement, that that would have been in the slide presentation, but she wanted to verify, so.
Perfect.
I think that's a great, great starting point.
Perfect. Sounds great. Um, Tyler, is there any need for a closed session?
Not for me.
Good, okay. Next item is to hear concerns from elected officials, department heads, or their representatives.
We have claims.
We are done with claims and we have one final agenda item.
Okay. I can, I can ask, I guess I can ask Tyler this question after, but we're still.
Yeah, we're still, we're still open.
I got a phone call from one of our fire and rescue communities. Uh, we were out of town last week asking if we were going to attend a meeting regarding the mutual aid and the cost share reimbursement from the county that we discussed here just a couple of weeks ago, three weeks ago. And I was led to believe that it was a follow-up from all key points or parties regarding how we hammered that out. But apparently it's really not. I, I.
So the way that the conversation was left, my understanding was that the, the prior folks in attendance would get with the designated commissioner and then myself and pick some dates to have a meeting. Um, and that's what I was left and I have not been contacted, so.
Which, which is why I'm fairly baffled by the call because it was basically the fire chief at Hershey and asked if we were going to be in, in attendance of their joint meeting on Monday. At the Hershey Fire Hall, I said, I'm not aware of a meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
And having been out of town for a couple of days, I thought, well, maybe I missed something.
Well, I wasn't aware of it either.
I communicated with Tyler and Joe and they both said, what? What? Don't know. So I'm a little nonplussed as to what this actually is, but I guess I'll go and find out.
You will be attending?
I'll attend tonight at 7:30. And I'll find out what's, what exactly his, it was an extent, it was an official, I guess, called an official invitation to us, for us to attend. But as Tyler points out, that they were supposed to contact us with some acceptable dates that everybody could get together. So I'm not really sure what this process is all about, but I'll go find out.
Find out and then get back to us and we can.
Talk about it Monday, I guess.
Sounds great. Now, is that Hershey-Sutherland or just Hershey?
Well, my understanding was Hershey and Sutherland, perhaps others. I don't know. I won't say because I don't know. But I was under the distinct impression that it was definitely Hershey and Sutherland. We're going to come together and talk about some of the historic, um, key points as to how it worked. And so I thought, well, that must be part of this process, right? But since Tyler and Joe haven't been contacted, I'm not sure what, what exactly to expect. So we'll find out.
Okay, sounds great. Hear concerns from elected officials, department heads, or their representatives?
Booker, do you have anything for us?
Do you all have anything?
I just, I mean, the rash is, I know that Brunz's department building needs dire attention because of the weather in there, the whole insulation hanging down from the ceiling. It must have fixed the hall and off-road.
That's a, that's a lot of, that's a lot of footage to see, isn't it?
But, you know, one thing you could look at now is this urethane insulation thing. If you throw that in there, it might work better than trying to put anything else up there.
Yeah, I don't know what the R value is, that is, but.
About as good as you can get. And in that situation, I don't know what else you have to do.
Yeah.
I would look forward to getting more information, whether this is a feasible option or not.
Hopefully, yes. We're going to the jail, is that where we're going?
Yeah, we're gonna go, uh, to conduct our quarterly inspection of Lincoln County Detention Center and I will call back when we're done there to adjourn the meeting. And Tristan, uh, you wanting to visit at 8:00 in the morning?
Yes, if you're available.
Uh, Commissioner Brunz has agreed to accompany me.
We'll allow it.
This one time?
Should be a raucous interview.
We'll allow it.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't make a habit of that. Big mistake.
Commissioner Weems is wise beyond his years.
I suppose you want the other half of that 20, actually.
Which are plenty.
Gave you to say that, right. It's in my pocket. I'm feeling the lull.
I, Becky, I call you, which is the director.